Welcome to your city commission study session. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. In accordance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the meeting can be viewed, like I said before. The public is encouraged to view the meeting using one of these options. A Leavenworth City Commission meeting is open to the public with limited seating. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19, face coverings and social distancing are required to attend the meeting. To attend the meeting in person, email C. Williamson@firstcity.org no later than four o'clock on the day of the meeting to reserve a seat. Seats are available on a first come, first served basis. If you are not attending the meeting but would like to submit comments on an agenda item to be read during the discussion on that topic, email your comments to C. Williamson@firstcity.org no later than 6:00 PM on the day of the meeting. First item is the countywide transportation study presentation.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, I'm going to turn this over in just a second to the President of the Leavenworth County Port Authority, Mr. Greg Cause. Just briefly, in summer of 2019, KDOT Secretary, the Secretary of the Kansas Department of Transportation, Julie Lorenz, came to the Chambers Government Affairs Committee. And in the course of that conversation, she unequivocally stated that what your county needs is a countywide transportation plan. You need to get the buy-in of the county, all of the cities, and you need to prioritize your projects if you want any chance at future state funding, Mid-America Regional Council funding, and if we found out through the infrastructure plan, the federal infrastructure plan, if you want federal funding. I think everybody recognized that that was something we needed to do. I think the City of Leavenworth has carried that message over the last two years, and I'm happy today that we've made some progress, and I think everybody's on board. The Port Authority is taking the lead, and the Port Authority President, Mr. Cause, is here to talk about getting that project underway. So I'll turn it over to Greg.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. My name, as you know, is Greg Cause. I'm the Chairman of Leavenworth County Port Authority. And I'm here today very, very excited. For probably the last 25 years, I've been trying to get people interested in improving the transportation in Leavenworth County, particularly to Leavenworth and Lansing, this area. As you guys know, that the transportation to City of Leavenworth, Lansing in particular, has been somewhat challenging. And as time has gone and things have grown, the transportation level of service has gone down. In the Kansas City metro area, we've seen a lot of growth in the northeast corner, southeast corner Lee Summit, southwest corner Aletha, but the transportation facilities in the northwest corner of Leavenworth have remained somewhat stagnant. And so I'm excited that hopefully we can get something moving on this. There has been interest by others. I know this commission has had interest. Some of the other commissions have too. Some of the other stakeholders in the county have had interest in somewhat of a regional plan or trying to improve the transportation. I'm sure you guys are aware that there has been a lot of studies that have been done over the last 20 years. And I'm not going to go into detail on these, but I'll hit them real quick. The 2000 call connector major corridor study was on I-70 from Topeka to Kansas City, did kind of look at 2440 and the K-7 freeway upgrade. 2006 was the K-7 corridor management plan, and this was done in different segments with segment one being Aletha, segment two was kind of the middle, and segment three was the north end. 2007 was the 2440 corridor management plan, and that was Honey Creek Road to K-7, basically Tongonoxie to K-7. They also looked at a north-south road kind of from Dempsey Road to the South-Leavenworth County line that would be run along the west side of Baser. 2008, a T-link and KDOT consultation with Leavenworth County priorities. Again, looked at a lot of the similar things. K-92 was looked at, which I'm sure you're familiar with. 2013 was a five-county study. Again, we looked at K-92, K-7, 2440, I-70. Getting a little more recent, and I'm not, I'm reading faster than I'm moving these.
That's all right.
So 2016 is the K-92 Centennial Bridge Study, which you guys were very involved in, looked at being a toll facility. Obviously, that was kind of a no-go. No one was in favor of toll for that. But it also looked at increasing the capacity on Metropolitan Fourth Street to the entrance to Fort Leavenworth. It also looked at a roundabout at 92 and 45 spur over by the gas station, which I'm happy to announce that contract has been awarded, and construction will start on that in about two weeks. And that's going to be somewhat of a mess over there with all the traffic that's already there. That project is expected to be completed by the end of November of this year. And basically, there will be a roundabout there, and then if you're going east on 92 and you want to get on 45 spur, there would be a separate lane to where you didn't have to go on the roundabout, because a lot of the traffic goes that way. So that's exciting that that's moving forward. I'm sure you're aware that the Centennial Bridge Project has been moved from the illustrative list to the constraint portion, and that means that hopefully preliminary engineering should begin later this year. And we'll get the engineering done, and then hopefully when funding comes up, it'll be ready to go out for bed and get that project moving. Patriot Highway, this was a project that John Bradford was pushing with Maris Consulting Group, and basically it was a new north-south intelligent highway, east of Linwood, and then ran west to Baser, and then turned east and west and ran on the south, it'd be the south side of Lansing, Baser there. They were anticipating a $4 billion project, which, that's a really big number. The project never really got off the ground. There was a lot of opposition for people that were going to lose their ground. More recently, Eastern Gateway. Back in the spring of 2020, Leavenworth County hired Trans Systems to do a conceptual study of a new bridge over the Missouri River and connecting somewhere in the Eisenhower Road, Fourth and Eisenhower, to Route 152 and 435 on the Missouri side. A new bridge, a new roadway to improve access in that direction. The study was completed in September, kind of put on the shelf. Then in October, the county was approached by John Smolin of Ballard and Spar about a public-private partnership to put this project in. They, at that point, it was considered being a toll road, and basically the private partnership would put this in, they would charge toll to recoup their investment. Project was estimated at, I think it was about 30 to 40 million for the construction, probably more than that.
Oh, the bridge?
Yeah.
About 300 million?
300 million. There probably would have had to been a public, there's probably going to have to be a public component for funding on that. That study is still going on. In November, the Board of County Commissioners authorized, or considered authorizing a feasibility study to determine if the project was feasible for a private partner. When that came on the agenda, I wrote a letter, and then also Leavenworth County Development Corporation, Harlan Russell, wrote a letter saying, hey, can you give us an opportunity to put input into this proposal? You need to get all the stakeholders, and we'd like to have some input. So the county tabled it for a month, came back, and eventually the county did authorize 175,000 for a feasibility study and legal fees. But the Board of County Commissioners directed staff to work with the Port Authority to conduct a regional transportation plan. And I know that had been you guys' recommendation previously to do a study. This was a recommendation from Leavenworth County Development Corporation and the recommendation from the Port Authority. So the county did agree to go ahead and have the Port Authority act as the lead in this study and to kind of coordinate the cities and the county to complete this project. So after that was done, the first of January, we got the committee going, which was basically the Port Authority, along with the help from Bill Noel with the county. We set up a meeting with Mark and with KDOT. KDOT Secretary Lorenz was there, the Deputy Secretary was there, the Chief Engineer. They had some planning engineers that were there also. And basically, KDOT says, yeah, we really would like to see you do this, just as Mr. Kramer said, you know, we want a plan to work off of, and we want something that all the cities, major cities and the county can agree on and say, yeah, this is what we want. This was done in the northwest part of Wichita, and Secretary Lorenz says it really worked good because they had their priorities, 1, 2, 3, 4. And when they got money, they could just start picking the projects off, start with one and work their way down. And so they got a lot completed doing that. And she indicated that, you know, they were all for it. She indicated at that time that they would possibly provide some funding for it too. They did not give any indication of how much funding, but her main thing was, you guys all need to be on the same page. If we've got Leavenworth and Lansing that want to do something different than the county, that want to do something different from Tongi or Baser, it's going to be a problem. So we've had several study sessions. We've started working on a draft of the request for proposals. The final draft version, or the version that we'd like to send out, has been included in your pocket. There was a subcommittee that provided review. That subcommittee consisted of paid staff members from the City of Leavenworth, City of Lansing, City of Baser, and City of Tongonoxie. Also, Leavenworth County, and then myself and Leavenworth County's on-call engineer are members but non-voting members. And we basically didn't want any non-paid people on the committee voting for an engineering firm due to conflict of interest and felt like we need to have the professionals that deal with this every day be the ones that make that decision. So the committee has approved this RFP. At this point, I'm going to all of the cities. Now, I'm going to visit each city first. Once I get all of the cities on board, hopefully, then I'm going to go to the county and request funding from the county. If, assuming we can get the county on board, then we'll go to KDOT and say, okay, we got everybody on board, this is the amount of money we have, and now we would like you to contribute too. We would expect that KDOT would contribute, and then at that point, we would put the RFP out on the street for proposals. The subcommittee that is made up of the paid staff members would review the proposals from the engineers, and they would make the recommendation of what engineer to put under So what are we trying to accomplish with this RFP? We're trying to get all of these studies that I talked about, and there's others out there that I didn't bring up. There's some good comp plans. You guys are just completing one now. Lansing has one, Tongi, Baser, and those all need to be, come into play too and be considered. But we want to pull everything together and then try to come up with a prioritized list of what are the best transportation options for Leavenworth County. You know, do we work on improving K-7? You know, with the idea of it's going to be a 69 highway with bridges, overpass, reverse frontage roads? Do we do an eastern gateway? Build a new bridge? Do we improve K-5 to wallcut? Do we build a bypass along the west side of Baser, Lansing, and Leavenworth? There's a lot of options, and we need to figure out what's the best one for Leavenworth County and then concentrate on that. Again, it does need to be a combined effort. Hopefully, when we get to the end of this thing, we can all agree on something. I'm very hopeful and optimistic that we can. That's kind of, that's a very important part for KDOT, though, to be able to use this and for Mark. Leavenworth County will be the lead agency for the consulting engineer. They will have the contract with the consulting engineer. They will have an agreement with each of the cities to provide funding and an agreement with KDOT to provide funding. So they will administer it even though they've handed it off to the Port Authority to oversee it, but the legal ends, the contracts, the payment of funds, and everything will go through the county. Estimating that this will probably be about a 12-month study. It's going to involve review of all the previous studies. It's going to involve public comment. I'm sure there's some other things that the consultant will want to do, but it's, anytime you start involving public comment, it's going to take some time to put it all together. And hopefully, we'll be coming out of COVID, and we can go back to the old style of public comment, probably along with electronic comments, too. The RFP, the consulting engineer will be selected on the following criteria: 20% of understanding of the project, 40% on approach, 15% on management, and 25% on the project team and relative experience. So again, I don't know that the scoring is going to be, there'll be an actual scoring card, but those are kind of the goals that we've asked the subcommittees to look at. So the scope, work with the steering committee, public involvement, data collection. We want to look at traffic volumes, crash history, infrastructure condition, the maintenance that we're putting into the roads, the forecast traffic patterns and volumes. Review the previous studies and then hopefully come up with a prioritized model to rank and identify the projects. They also hopefully will look at a high level at some of the environmental clearances, historical floodplain, things like that, to where if they're going to look at, you know, let's say they look at an eastern gateway or something of that sort of what environmental clearances are going to be required to get across the Missouri River. The eastern gateway project obviously could play into this. If the county gets this back and a public-private partnership makes sense, and that's the direction it's going, then, you know, that could play a role in how this comes out, too. If it comes back that it's $300 million and the tolls are going to be $10 to cross, and there's no way that a private party is probably going to invest in that. Or it comes back and they say, well, you need 200 million of the 300 to make this work, then people are going to say, okay, if you got $200 million, are we better to do a western bypass or K-7 or something else when you're talking that kind of money? The deliverables from the consultant will be, present the draft findings to the Port Authority. They will also make a presentation to the cities, to the county, with the goal of trying to develop a consensus among everybody. Then they will issue a final report, hopefully for adoption by all the elected officials, and will be used for steering guidance for KDOT and for federal funding. So the funding stream that we have proposed, we're estimating this study to cost somewhere in the $400,000 to $600,000 range. So right now, our budgeting is the $450,000. If it comes in more than this, then we'll go back and readdress how we want to budget it. But I don't know that we would come back to you guys. I would hope that between KDOT and the county, we could come up with any additional funds if so needed. But basically, 150,000 each from the county, 150 from KDOT, 90 from the City of Leavenworth, 30 from Lansing, and 15 from Baser and Tongonoxie. And again, we want buy-in from all of the cities, not only their ideas and thoughts, but their dollars to show that they're serious about it. With that...
Those numbers are based on population, then, I assume? Those last numbers, based on population?
Based on population and just kind of a gut feel, probably. There wasn't a formula that was used.
Okay.
Have the cities agreed to these, or it's just an estimate and you have to approach them?
That's what he's doing here tonight?
Going now, yeah.
I guess what I'm asking is a consensus for the City of Leavenworth for the 90,000.
Okay. I think we need to state here the reason, the main reason. You stated a little bit at the beginning, but for the general public, we have, we have a highway that goes to Kansas City that has 13 stops on it. Is that correct? And it's just, we need something that is more accessible to our major highways in the Kansas City area. And is that correct?
Yeah, and what I would add is that there are highway dollars out there, but you cannot get them unless you have this plan in place. You will not be considered at the state level. You will not be considered by the Mid-America Regional Council, and you will not be considered by the federal government for public funds for these projects unless you have a plan like this in place, and we simply don't. And we continue to hear from businesses and residents that access to the Kansas City area, there are no good access points. K-7, of course, you know, not only do we have 13 traffic lights, I think we'll probably have 14 or 15 in the next couple of years, and so there's no, no good way. So I think that's, that's why it's important.
It is. And I think an important thing, too, is, as you've talked about several times, is having buy-in from everybody, having the consensus, just having one that, that will mean more as far as getting our dollars, our state dollars, too, don't you think?
I think so. And if for some reason one of the stakeholders chooses not to participate, then we're going to go back and reanalyze that, and we would definitely come back to you. So any consensus or commitment that you would make is based on the others doing the same thing, too. So unfortunately, you're the guinea pig. You're the first one I've approached.
All right. We can handle it. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Kramer, I know there's a bit of a loose interpretation on how transient guest tax can be used for tourist-type activities. I know we're, we're getting close to half a million dollars a year in transient guest tax ballpark.
Yeah, I mean, roughly.
Could, could we use any of those funds for this 90,000?
We have a pretty clear funding stream that I would suggest, and those are our federal funds exchange dollars, which are transportation earmark dollars. And I think that'd be the cleanest source.
It's solvent enough, I mean, we have a note that we can get that? Okay. Thank you.
That's good to know. Yes?
Thanks for coming this evening, Mr. Cause. Very good presentation, and I've read the request for proposal. I think it's very good. My really only question is with regard to its paragraph, "Scope of Services, Foresee, Develop Goals and Objectives," and talks about that, which is obviously very important for a study and a plan like this. But just with respect to the scoring criteria, which I think, you know, are pretty good, consistent with KDOT and Mark, project prioritization and evaluation criteria for funding projects should also be developed, taking into account items such as connectivity to the rest of Kansas City, obviously metropolitan area, interstate connectivity, safety congestion, multimodal impacts, operations, and economic development impact. I do have a question, because under the leadership of our mayor, we were going to have a pilot proof-of-principle program, right, with intra-city?
Transit, yeah, and just in city, yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, is that something that, I mean, would this study be looking at intra-city, not just us, but the other cities? Is this, is this part of that or not? This is more of a highway automobile truck type? Connectivity type thing with the Kansas City metropolitan area? Right, right. Okay. Okay, then that answers my question. I wasn't quite sure, and if it...
Yeah, transit, difference between transit and transportation, so we're looking at transit, really.
I understand that, but, I mean, I mean, there is, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be, but I don't know if other cities have, you know, similar plans. I just felt if that was the case, then we needed to have a, like a metric or a criteria, scoring criteria, but since we don't, that's not the plan or the focus of this particular study, that's fine. The only other thing I'll say is that 2006 study for K-7, what's it called? The 2006 K-7 corridor management plan. That had some really good, and I haven't, you know, read it from front to back, but it had some really good information and some plans in there that would have to be funded, obviously, for these, these arc cuts, you know, like parallel parkway and all the other major intersections from about parallel up to Gilman or, and so I would just say that they really need to take a hard look at that, because there's already been some work done on the K-7 in terms of what could be possible back in 2006. And I don't, I don't know, things have changed a little bit since then, but not much. I don't think they even started that arc yet, the parallel.
Well, they have, it's, you know, you've heard us say it many times, K-7 is supposed to be a highway, 65 miles an hour. You have to stop every mile and a half, whatever it is. It's, it's basically turning into Metcalf Avenue, and it's no longer a highway. And that just, it's, makes it difficult to attract industry, it makes it tough to get into Kansas City at a reasonable amount of time. You know, the master plan was, I think, with the 2006 studies, the arc cuts, or, you know, even if we could use frontage roads or something, but K-7 needs to be a direct shot to I-70, in my opinion. The first one that came in was Leavenworth Road, 25, maybe 30 years ago, they had put in a stoplight there because of the Woodlands, the dog track. And they said, we needed that. Oh, that's all closed. You ask them to close, you know, take out that light now. Oh, no, we can't do that. And all they do is add, add, add. I think all of us can remember, 30 years ago, the only thing you had was a blinking yellow light of Victory Junction.
Victory Junction, yeah.
And that's it, but no longer, no longer the case. So it is, makes it difficult for us, and if we can get that corrected, I think it'd be great for long-term viability of the northern part of the county and the entire county.
On the other side of the city, too, or the county, I know that as they're building the airport, that they wanted to include, I'm on the Kansas City Transportation Authority, and they wanted to include more direct corridors from the airport, maybe, maybe a driving force as well from the new KCI Airport. So it's something to maybe include in your planning, too, looking into that aspect of it, because they, they also like to, that's one thing they need to have a component.
I mean, right now, we have a lot of data. Mark has a lot of data on the traffic patterns and the traffic counts, and, you know, we can tell you how many people are going across 92. We can tell how many people are going south. And so I think they'll have a pretty good feel of, is that what's more important? Is it to go east or is it to go south?
Yeah, that's a good point.
And I think something on this plan, too, my hope is that this plan is more of a five-to-15, 20-year plan, and I probably will not ever see it fulfilled. And I'm sure it'll be changed, you know, after 10 years, you're probably going to go back and look at it again. But it needs to be more of a longer-term plan. And it's kind of like when 435 was put in, you know, that was put in way before there was anything around there, and then you look at the development. I keep talking about I-235, and people say, I-235? Well, we got 635, we got 435, the next interstate is I-235.
Yeah.
And Greg personally sees this coming up, you know, east of Tongonoxie, you know, extending to the south, coming up north into Leavenworth County and tying up into... extending to the south, coming up north into Leavenworth County and tying up into I-29. That's my dream, what I dream about at night, but, I mean, you can imagine the development that would happen for Leavenworth County, for Lansing, for Leavenworth, if you had an interstate that was located, you know, five miles west of Leavenworth.
Yeah.
You know, the city would just grow in that direction, they'd grow right to it. So, that's kind of what I'm hoping that we can come to, not a short-term solution like arc cuts or putting in another traffic light. I want a long-term solution that's going to serve us for the next 50 to 75 years.
Be good.
So...
Ms. Leonhard, did you have any questions?
I did. Mr. Cause, a great presentation, and I really like the collectiveness of all these projects in the one plan. And when you, if everything goes as planned, and you said 12 months, so we're looking at probably next summer-ish?
Probably.
Okay. And, no, I'm really supportive of this, I think we just really need to get the ball rolling, and it sounds like this is what we have to do to start working on a lot of these projects, so, thank you.
Mr. Cause, what's your schedule for Lansing, Baser, and Tongi?
I don't have it here with me, but I finish up on May 12th with Leavenworth County. Next week, I don't have anything, the week after, I have, I believe it's Baser and Lansing.
Oh, so this is going very quickly, I mean, you're going to have the next three weeks? Okay.
Yeah. So, May 12th, I go to the county, and hopefully, the county's the last one I want to go to.
Okay, good.
Because I want to get all the cities on board and go to the county and say, "Hey, all the cities are on board, we need you."
Okay, good.
Good.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments, do you think? Will this come as a consensus at our mission meeting?
So, right now, if I could just sort of see, is there a general consensus or a general agreement to do for? Yep, that's all I need at this point. And then, at some point, when Greg gets this wrapped up, we'll have to come back to the commission for approval of the funding.
Sounds good.
It seems like you have a strong consensus.
Yeah. There'll be an agreement between the city of Leavenworth and Leavenworth County, so I'm sure that would have to come through your approval.
Yep.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
That's great.
Next item on the agenda is the temporary sign review.
This will be Julie Hurley, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, commissioners. As you'll remember, in February of this year, the executive director of CASA came before you at a study session and just asked that we take a look at our temporary sign regulations as they relate to nonprofit businesses. Right now, the way our regulations are written are that all temporary signs, with specific exceptions for like garage sale signs, real estate signs, that type of thing, but all other temporary signs require issuance of a temporary sign permit, and two such permits can be issued for any location in a calendar year, and each of those permits is good for 60 days. So, any location can have a total of 120 days per calendar year. So, staff did take a look also at some other area municipalities, and we didn't find any language that specifically related to nonprofit businesses or anything like that, so we took a look at what we could do to really address the needs that we've heard about in the community. So, right now, we do currently have a section in the regulations that our signs excluded from permit, and so, we thought that that would be a good place to sort of work in this need that we've heard about. So, right now, the way it's worded is, "Temporary signs containing non-commercial messages at churches, synagogues, and other similar places of worship, community centers, public and private schools, and buildings or structures owned or leased and used by other public, semi-public, or civic organizations, those would not require issuance of a temporary sign permit." So, any temporary signs they put up do have to comply with our other requirements in terms of size, location, that type of thing, but they don't need to get a permit. So, in looking through all of the regulations, we felt like that would be the best place that we could work with what we have without making a huge change and just work something like this in. So, really, we looked at what kind of language we could add that would cover what we need, and so, our thought is that we would keep that same language and then just add the category of public service organizations. And we landed on that because we already use that term, "public service organizations" in terms of CDBG funding, some other activities that we do. So, that category is already pretty well-defined in what we're already working with. So, that would cover an organization like CASA, Community of Hope, that type of thing. So, that would allow those types of organizations to put up a temporary banner without a permit, it would need to still meet, you know, size and location requirements, but they could do that without a permit. So, that would be our proposal on that. So, we just wanted to go ahead and bring that before you real quick. We are going to be having our annual update to the development regulations coming before you here in the next month or so. So, assuming that the commission is happy with that language, this will be included in that update that you see next month, and then that would be going into place.
Okay. Ms. Meyer, do you have any comments for us? You need to come up to either there or here, either way.
So, if that were adopted, then would we still, would we still need to apply for the signs to be?
No, there would be no permit requirement.
No permit, so you wouldn't have to apply at all. Put up your sign.
I don't think I have any other questions. I think I'm very happy with that.
Good, and it wouldn't have to, yeah, the only thing is, like she said, it would have to follow our other guidelines for signs, but you don't have to get a special permit at all.
No permit. So, that would be specific to, like, size, making sure it's in good condition, those sorts of things.
And the location, so it's not right out on the street, or, you know, not, you know, distraction to traffic and that sort of thing in the right of way.
Okay.
So, yeah, any of that, the normal rules, but you just wouldn't have to make a permit.
Okay, no, I don't think I have any questions.
Okay, you think that's okay? All right, thank you. Anybody have any comments on that?
Just for clarification, I know one came a couple of months ago and cited maybe a couple dozen signs that were not in compliance. Those, in fact, were in compliance, were they not?
I'm not sure, all of the locations that were mentioned, I know there were a couple of specific ones pointed out, I don't know all the locations, but, you know, again, as always, you know, code enforcement picks up, you know, all that we can, there's always going to be some that are missed, but we do pick up those that are not.
Yeah, but people have variants, just because you look at it, doesn't necessarily mean that it's out of spec or out of compliance.
Right, and someone may have gotten a permit, a lot of times, folks will inadvertently leave them up too long, something like that, and so, usually, when you're seeing something that feels like it's out of compliance, it's something that code enforcement has already picked up on and is handling.
Okay, thank you.
Has this gone to the planning commission?
Not yet, these are the overall updates for development rates, it's going to the planning commission at their May meeting, I think it's the May 3rd, that first Monday, and then we'll be having that before you shortly thereafter.
All right.
Thank you.
Any action we need to take?
If you're acceptable, we'll put this in front of the planning commission and then back before you pretty quickly.
Yes, yes.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer, for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, presentation by the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
And of course, Kristy Lee.
Kristy Lee.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, commissioners, nice to be here. Did something happen?
You touched it.
Oh, I can't move it.
Something really happened, what a...
It's a mystery. No signal. There you go. Okay. All right, well, we can start over. Nice to see everyone. Some of the discussion points tonight for the presentation, the national travel industry update, the state of Kansas, and then some Leavenworth updates. National travel industry updates, COVID-19, as everyone's well aware of now, a year and a half later or so, that we're still working in this mess. However, the majority, 79% of global business travel association members and stakeholders said that they would be comfortable traveling for business after receiving the vaccination. So, I really do think that that's going to start catching up with the travel industry and that, and I think it is going to start opening up our avenues of travel again. So, very much looking forward to that day. If you're not, it sounds like the fort has opened back up, so excited about that. I seen a post today on the Facebook that the Frontier Army Museum is open to civilians again, so that's awesome. The National Travel and Tourism Week is just a couple of weeks away on that. This year, they are celebrating the power of travel again, and the theme this year will be the recovery processes across the nation. And so, we're, we've got plans to participate in that campaign as well. KCRDA, which is a Kansas City Regional Destination Alliance, is doing like a cleanup day, and I believe we're going to be down at the Oletha Farm, Mahaffey, Stagecoach and that, and doing some cleanup there, just as kind of a workday. And then, we're going, as far as Leavenworth, we're going to be at the farmer's market on May 8th again. So, that will be our kind of, our National Travel and Tourism Week campaign. The American Rescue Plan Act, that was presented in March of 2021, the 1.9 trillion relief package, included like 750 million set aside for Economic Development Administration grants. So, right now, we're still kind of waiting on the State Office of Tourism to send out some information on that, if, which DMOs would qualify for some kind of funding and that, and seeing if we might be able to apply for some kind of funding from 2020, but more to follow on that. The Kansas, the governor has relocated tourism department to Commerce right now, so that will take effect as of July 1. They've been, everyone seems to be very excited about that move. We just held a TAC conference call last week in that, and everyone seems to be very pleased with that move. So, they will be in the process of moving their offices and everything with, over the next few months.
Where had it been before?
It was in the wildlife parks and tourism. They had moved over to that back when Brownback was in office in that, and so, now they've moved them to Department of Commerce again.
Thank you.
So, Economic Development Administration, again, that's that $750 million grants. I didn't realize I had that in there twice, but this is on the state level, then. Again, we'll, more to come on this, hopefully, we'll be able to apply for some kind of funding through that, or at least get it out there to where some of our other tourism industry stakeholders locally might be able to apply some funding through that. So, we'll keep posted on that. So, some of the statistics for Leavenworth in 2020, unfortunately, like, it's really hard to estimate our visitors. Normally, I use the amount of visitors that were, that attended or that went to the Carol, not the Carol Mansion, to the C.W. Parker Carousel Museum, and that's where I use my, because I actually keep track of each visitor that shows there. So, I usually extrapolate that, put that into a formula, and then I come up with the estimated amount of visitors we had, but unfortunately, it's just, it's almost impossible to kind of estimate that for 2020, so I just, I didn't. Our website views and usage, 52,000 for unique users, and then over 231,000 page views. So, we'll, hopefully, we can continue to have that grow and see more usage of our website. The five top states, referral sites, Travel Kansas continues to be our number-one spot for referrals, which is, makes sense and which is really good. We do have a couple of digital ads going on their website in reference to our location and that, so I really, it is working. And just wanted to put a little information in there from some of the statistics and that. So, just during the planning process, this was hot off the press from one of the, I should have put where that came from, but anyway, 56.3% of the people have already decided to visit a destination, 32% interested in visiting a destination but haven't made their travel plans yet, and then 13.11% considering destinations for a trip, and then I am currently in a destination, 0.4%. So, influenced, you know, these are the people that we're trying to get to use our website and that. So, included our budget expenditures by function there for 2020. So, 49% of the overall budget was spent on marketing, and then only about 18% on administration So, more of the marketing from 2020. We did have 1.7 million in print distribution, and that's overall, I've got, it broke down, but that includes every ad that we placed. As far as, like, one ad, for example, in the state visitors' guidebook, they print 350,000. So, that's where you just keep adding up wherever you place your ads and that. So, print distribution was 1.7 million, then, totaling all our ads that we placed, 2.4 million in digital ad impressions and billboards, 231,000 website views, 331 social media impressions, 236 individual requests, which I think is really good, we hope that that grows, and then 58,000 spent in marketing dollars, and then 6.5 thousand visitor guidebooks. Basically, for 2021, we're reusing the 2020 visitor guidebooks, we didn't reprint them this year, just because we, you know, we print about 15,000 to 17,000 every year, so we just put a sticker on there that shows 2021, and then added the events guide, a new events, calendar of events in there, so. I thought that was kind of interesting. Below, I just had found consumers for 2020, 56% of consumers were shopping in neighborhood stores or buying more locally sourced products, and then 79% are planning to continue this. So, I mean, there was so much information out there that a lot of people were going to Amazon and the rest of them and that, but there still are consumers that are really shopping locally and trying to support their own communities, which I thought was really So, occupancy for 2020 was 53%, which I thought was pretty good, because I think the state occupancy for 2020 was like 42. So, we did overall do better than I thought we would. So, our ADR, average daily rate, was 105.46, and our RevPAR, that's, sorry about that, it jumped down on me, but the RevPAR, the revenue per available room, is $55.95. And so, overall revenue was 7.4 million, which equates to about six, almost 70,000 room nights, and then our transient guest tracks that we collected was at 383,000, which equated to about a little over 45,000 room nights. So, pretty good, I think, overall for 2020, when it started out so bad. Right, so. Some of our local updates, COVID vaccine seems to be going well in our area and on Fort, and so, again, people are feeling increasingly positive, and I think about 88% of Americans now have travel plans within the next six months. There's still, obviously, more domestic and drive markets are being favored over any international travel yet, but I think that hopefully, that's right around the corner as well. So, 2020 kind of really brought everything home, and, you know, everybody was trying to concentrate on local and that, so, and I, too, got more involved in the design and promotions committee at Main Street and that, so continue to serve on those committees. They've got a couple of things in the works, and we'll continue to actively work with them, I think, in the future, because it makes sense for us to both really work closely together and promote our area as much as possible. Local occupancy, we fared better than some of the other areas in the Kansas, like I said, out there, the state was at 40.7% occupancy for 2020, and we were at 53, so we were quite a bit higher. One thing I thought, I have been holding our manager hotel meetings and that, so one of the things that they noted, that almost all of them are seeing a lot more walk-ins than they've ever seen in the past, which I don't know if it's just a fluke for the 2020, you know, COVID thing that's been going on, or what, because they actually, almost all of them are reservations, you know, that they get, they don't hardly get any walk-ins, but they did note that they are seeing a lot more. And then also, this, the discussion, which I mentioned during the budget thing, as far as their per diem rates and group bookings by third parties. as far as their per diem rates and group bookings by third parties. 2021 updates, we did, we are still doing our grant program, which is great, and the rounds on February 1st. Leavenworth County Historical Society, $5,000 towards their casino night and other events. Leavenworth Main Street, $5,000 towards their Pocket Parks presentations and, and updates that they want to do. First City Museum is painting a mural on their building. Santa Fe Trails, $4,000 for the Cool Hand Luke gravel grinder, and that's actually on Sunday, the 24th. So, that should be a lot of fun out there. Actually, Paula Cole came in the office today and got 50 more guidebooks and also bags. So, they're up to 300 that we gave to them this year. And she said their reservations right now are registrations, I guess, were at 268, I think she said. So, they should still be getting a few over the next few days. So, yes, exciting that the event is growing. And then the Leavenworth Historical Association is going to be doing a cornhole tournament this year. So, that should be fun. I believe they were going to do it all summer long, so it's hopefully going to be a good fundraiser for them. And just throughout the '21 and, and 2020 and that, always trying to continue with the KCRDA co-ops. They're doing the history trips, the coffee trips, the holidays, the kids' trips. We're working on a, oh, what's it called? I didn't put that one down there. But anyway, they've got a few more in the works that we're going to be doing for this year as well. So, and these are continuing to, on a, on a basis, so they're, they're still ongoing, except for obviously the holiday one. But, so we'll continue to work for, with them on their co-ops. And then I-70 Association co-ops that they're continuing to do, the blogs, the backlit, like, signs at the tourism, tourism information centers. And then also, they're going to be hiring some travel writers again this year, so we'll get involved in that. So, and they are, of course, on the Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Pinterest, all of them. So, a lot of exposure on those as well for us. Glad to report that we are starting to get some group tours. So, Kids Are Kids out of Olathe will be here on June 10th. And then the Billbury Tours out of Austin is still planning on being here September 13th and 14th. So, kind of excited about those. And I've got a couple in the works now that I want to call since the fort is opening back up. So, they said as soon as the fort opens to give them a call. So, hopefully, we'll get a couple more for this year. And then just the calendar of events listed below there, so, of upcoming events for this year. Some of the trade show, trade shows and conferences that I did attend in 2020. Still not a bad, bad selection, but, so, got out there to a few of them. And then this year, have attended Boomers in Group in Louisville. And I'm assuming, I haven't heard for sure, but I, I do think they'll probably hold Pair Day in August. And then we'll do small market meetings in Cheyenne, and then the TAC Conference in Liberal, and then the KSAE Meeting Show in Topeka. And then just wanted to do, show you our mission statement, and then a little bit about the CVB, and then our board members are below on the bottom there. And then website and phone number. So, if there's any questions on anything, I'd be happy to get back to you or could report any information.
I have a question, and I know you're, you mentioned the things that you have marketing campaigns on. Have you started that for the Camp Leavenworth event that we have scheduled for?
Yes, we actually just, Taylor and I and Paul attended a, a meeting today on Camp Leavenworth and that. So, they're working with Whiskey Designs again this year, and they are going to, they're just now approving all the graphics that they'll be using. And so, as soon as those graphics get approved and the website gets built and that, they've got a plan of when to start rolling out on the Facebook and the social media and, and everything that goes along with that. So, stand by, and I think they're going to start April 22nd, I believe, with the rollout.
The other question I have, do we, do we have some advertisements on some of the billboards on I-70 or I-29?
Currently, I don't have any billboards right now. And that, I usually try and do a summer campaign and then usually a, like a holiday campaign on billboards.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No. Any other questions?
Great presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Kramer, do you have anything for us?
No, were you going to say something about the Concerned Clergy? Mayor Bowder, Chief Kitchens and I attended a Concerned Clergy Prayer Breakfast on Saturday, so I'd just like to thank them. I was the guest of Chief Kitchens, and it was just a good group of about 10 clergy and about 10 community leaders talking about maintaining close relationships. So, I thought that was really productive and talked about, once all COVID precautions go away, looking at some community events coming up and maybe in the fall. So, I thought it was a great time.
I thought it was great, too. And this was their prayer breakfast, and they're planning to do that annually, and I think that's really good, too. Mr. Kramer, did you want to say anything about the art exhibit down at the, you know more about it?
Yes, so it's been, it's been a while. Prior to the pandemic, the commission, we had Ms. Arrend Yoon, who is a military spouse and also a professional artist and photographer, approached the commission about doing a public art display at Landing Park. And the theme of this, it starts in the month of Military Children, and then it moves into May, Military Appreciation. And it is about the distance between service members and their families while they're serving, when the families are here. So, the installation will start, I believe, tomorrow, and then we'll have a sort of a soft opening on Thursday. And at 1, at 1:30? No.
10.
10. And then, so you'll see the service members and their families separated by the walking path through the middle of the park. And these are full-size, high-level art projects, and there's corresponding websites and the stories that the children and the families have. So, we'll put some stuff out on our website and really link to that, and it's going to be up for about six weeks through, through May, and it'll be taken down in the first week of June.
Great. I think it's good for everybody to know, and I hope we get a lot of visitors downtown for that.
Which date does it start?
On Thursday.
This Thursday?
Thursday it'll actually be in. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Mr. Griswold, Commissioner Griswold, you have anything?
Just, just very quickly, looking at the three major metrics that the county tracks as far as COVID-19, the community test percent, percentage for positive tests, and the daily case, case counts reported per day, 14 moving average, and the total community cases per 100,000. Pretty much those metrics stayed stable, and they're, they're rather low, which is good. So, the only other thing I would say, I mean, I think a, a major factor as far as that goes are the vaccinations that are being administered, and it looked like a little over 1,500 vaccinations administered last week by the county health department. So, hopefully, we'll keep doing that. And, you know, what we're hearing nationally is that now that the, the critical thing is demand, there's plenty of supply. So, I would just encourage all our county residents and the city, and the residents and citizens of City Leavenworth to, to go to these clinics and, and get vaccinated. And I think the, the next one in our gymnasium in the Riverfront Community Center is tomorrow.
It is, 9 to 4.
9 to 4, so.
Good. Yep. First and second down.
That's my update on COVID-19 and.
Well, and I, I believe that actually, you know, I think it's a lot higher than the percentage.
I mentioned that last week. Oh, it is a lot higher.
A lot higher just because of all the, all those shots that have been given at the VA.
For Leavenworth and VA, as of last week, they had given 25,000 shots at the VA. Of course, that's probably gone up, that number's probably gone up as a result of, you know, a week since, or a week later. And then last week, there's about 13,000 shots that have been given at Fort Leavenworth. I looked at it, I looked at that metric last week, and it was two weeks old. So, we're doing, we're way, well over 50,000, I think, within the county, which is good.
Yes, I think, I agree. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Preisinger?
Just a shout out to Public Works, specifically the Street Department. I think we all woke up to four and a half inches of snow this morning. By 5 o'clock, the streets were perfectly clean, so we did a great job. Did I miss something?
That was good. Is that on, sir?
Okay. No, I didn't have any, I didn't have any comments at this time.
Okay. I, I guess I can't go without commenting on the actions today in our national news. I personally believe that justice has been served, and I think this is going to create a lot of, just the, the, the meeting we went to with the Concerned Clergy the other day, I think is so important, and they need to have that in every community. And our, I think our police department does a great job of communicating, but you need to be prepared, you know, any kind, anytime anything like this happens, and be ready to work with your community to make, make positive changes. So, blessings to Mr. Floyd's family and to, to everybody involved in this. My, my son is right there near where all of this, he works right down the street. He was, he was very excited that this went the way it did, and hopefully, we can have some healing. So, anyway, that's, I needed to say something about that.
That's good. Very good.
I, I'll tag on to that, and just like, I would say, it's renewed belief in the rectitude of our justice system.
Like Mr. George Floyd. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any, anybody else? Ms. Williamson, do you have anything for us? Okay, with that, we are adjourned.